Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. You know, we could provide a surprise bulletin before I started.
I do believe it's to leave the United States of America. And it's really important with the standards variation under the usual literature.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. We have this evening the town council. Triple town council meeting for September twenty third, two thousand twenty five. We are also holding a public hearing as well as a board of assessors meeting this evening. Our first order of business is to hold a public hearing for an amendment to our historic district ordinance. On chapter eighty four, section eleven, the full eight. And just to set some context for this, on any time the town needs any amendments or changes to any of our ordinances, it is considered that we have to hold a public hearing. The amendment proposed for the historic district commission brought forward by the historic district committee is essentially to add the word composite material. To this particular section, and I'll just read the sentence where. We have the change. So again, this is. Eighty-four, eleven, the number eight. Signs in addition to the dimensional requirements for signs contained in the zoning ordinance. All newer replacement signs located within the historic district shall be need from. The previous language read just wood or metal, and now the new language will read composite material, wood or metal. So that is the addition we have on the table for the public hearing this evening. Um, I will open it up to. I know I've got members of the historic district commission here. Anything, Dan, if you want to add, or did I, I'm good. Can I cover that?
I think we're good. If we have any questions.
Great. Does anyone in the room have any questions on the proposed amendment? Okay, council.
Oh, thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirty two P M. And we will open our board of assessors meeting.
Sorry, needs to be a motion to close.
Thank you, thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing at six thirty two P M.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. All right, up next, I will go ahead and open our board of assessors meeting also at six thirty two P M. So just to provide some context for those large group we have in the meeting, which is lovely. Um, the town council also functions as the board of assessors, so periodically we do hold a board of assessors meeting where we process abatement. Um, we've had a few different abating applications come into our assessor, our town assessor, and Bernadette's here this evening. Thank you for being here. Um, to present those to the council so we can make a judgment on those abatement. I'll welcome Bernie to the table. Thank you.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, go now, go to bed, excuse me. This should be easy. These are, there's four abatements in your packet, number four, eight, ten, and eleven. And what they represent is properties where they had an informal hearing before the end of the revaluation. And the informal hearing, they took notes and it goes back to the K R T office for review. The changes happened after we threw the values for commitment. So that's all this represents is just a data correction from an informal hearing. And it just didn't make it in time for commitment. Um, so these are not valued arguments. These are just simply dead data corrections. So if you'd like, I can review what the. What each one represents or up to you.
I'm trying to make sure I understand clearly. So these are changes that we were more or less aware of. In, can you ask, that we are aware of, that we weren't able to kind of fold into the K R T process in time? Is that fair or?
So the informal hearings actually went until August twenty fifth, which is the day before commitment. But I had to finalize values on the twenty first.
Okay.
Yeah, so that way you had all of the materials ready for commitment on the twenty sixth. You, we needed to have that into you for, you know, Thursday, Friday for, um, you know, public notice.
Okay.
So, um, so these changes you wouldn't even have seen if K R T had just finished their informal hearings before the twenty first.
Got it.
But they did it, and it was actually good customer service that they extended their informal hearings. So it's not a failing on their part. It's just. Just the timing.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so number, um, number four was a reduction where, um. They had a barn removed from the property and that wasn't captured in the assessment and also a correction to the concrete basement. So that one resulted in a seventy-one thousand four hundred dollar reduction. Uh, number eight was a reduction of fifty-six thousand six hundred. And that was a correction to the condition. So the condition was rated at below average from average. Um, number ten represents a correction to the grade. So the grade is the quality of the building. Architectural design, workmanship, the materials used. And then number eleven represents a change, another change in condition from good to average. And that amount was sixty-two thousand. So if you, um, and all of these, of course, are above the threshold for me to be able to approve, so I wanted to present them here to you tonight. Um, if it makes it easier, I don't know if you can just, you know, do one motion to approve all four, or if you'd rather, you know, um, do each one separately. It's up to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Council, do you have any questions about four? Okay, um, I would be in favor of one motion, but I'm gonna check, no, we'll be able to do individual motions. Um, any other discussion or any questions or anything for Burnout before we? Okay, um, I will have a motion to approve. Let me just ask, I want to make sure I get all the right things in the motion. I'm gonna do the value evaded for the abatement number. Those two pieces of information. And the.
I'm probably. You believe is abatement number a mountain for the map and lot? Is what I've done in the past.
Just the data numbers.
Okay, nope.
The data number. Data number, the value of data, that's all you need.
Okay, all right. I'll go ahead and make a motion to, um, approve abatement number eight, twenty twenty six, step four. Um, in the, um, value evaded amount of seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. I'll make a motion to approve abatement A two zero two six dash eight and the amount of fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Your motion and second. All those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Up next, I will make a motion to approve abatement A two zero two six dash ten and the amount of one, one hundred forty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. And last, um, I will make a motion to approve abatement number A two zero two six dash eleven and the amount of sixty-two thousand dollars.
Seconds.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Um, that takes care of all of our board of assessors, uh. Business for this evening. I do just want to clarify, so in all of those motions that we just passed, we indicated the value of data that's represented out of the property value. Um, which then translates to a different tax dollar amount that's captured in our supporting docs. Thank you for ever being here.
Thank you.
This evening, um, I think that takes care of our board of assessors. And I will go ahead and close board of assessors at six thirty eight P M. I'll make a motion to close the board of assessors at six thirty eight P M.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All the players say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Right, that takes care of the public hearing and our board of assessors. We can get into normal town council business. Uh, we have all four councillors present. Um, and we will go ahead and get into approving our minutes from our last council meeting. Um, first, before we get into the motion, council has already had the edits to the minutes from September night. Okay. Um, I will go ahead and make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from town council meetings of September ninth, two thousand twenty-five as written.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. And up next, we have our special meeting, um, special townhouse meeting on September sixteenth. Um, where we held an executive session. Um, any edits to those from the council? Uh, okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the special meeting minutes from September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five as written.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All of the favors say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa. Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four two. And up next, we have our treasurer's warrants. I'll make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five and the amount of. Two hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Or questions, anybody? All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion pass for you. Thanks for your patience. Follow that. Uh, next, we have a important presentation. Uh, first, we have niche engineering here to talk. We, I think, have people from several different organizations, um, here to, um, then feed round to us. Uh, I know we have slides in our supporting docs. Tanya is going to, I think, be bringing those up. I will welcome whoever wants to lead this to the podium. If you would just introduce yourself, thank you for.
Yes, of course. Uh, take your time with that because I'm gonna, they're gonna pass them, pass the slides on to them, but to start, wanted to say hello. Thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Reagan Young. I'm the director of communications and member services at S and P D C. And the last time I was standing up here was for the approval of your company, your plan. That was very exciting to work with you guys on that project, and I'm glad to be back again. So tonight what we're talking about is nine mill road out, which is a town-owned site. But the town reached out to us, uh, interested in doing some environmental investigations here. And so when we, uh, first started looking into the site, we found some assessments that had already been done actually years before. Uh, including one that we were going to do ourselves. We started, um, the effort, the O F H, the environmental site assessment, and then found one that had already been done. So the next step from there was to look at reuse of the site. So in order, one of the big key things when deciding how we're going to remediate a site. Is finding out what you're actually going to use that site for. So, um, our assessment program has funding to do these studies, and we felt like this site was a good fit. So the site that you're going to see tonight was fully funded by S and P D C's brownfield assessment program. Um, and we're gonna have Emily Walsmer from T R C presenting a couple of slides. She is our environmental. Uh, qualified environmental professional and they're contracted up, and they also hired hitch engineering to do more of this reuse, uh, work. So the study included looking at your past plans, looking at your ordinances, town input. And, um, we're gonna talk about three different potential redevelopment scenarios and look forward to hearing your thoughts. So I'm gonna, I'm happy, Emily, come up and start us off. Hello all. Um, so as Reagan said, my name is Emily Walsmer. I work with T R C Environmental. And we are S and P D C's qualified environmental professional or Q M E P for their brownfields program. Um, I will apologize in advance for all of the acronyms that you may hear. There are a lot of them. Uh, so please feel free to ask questions, um, towards the end. Um, so if we could advance to the next slide, I'm not sure if this could. Thank you. Um, so just to expand on what Reagan was discussing regarding the, uh, the use of brownfields funds here. So, um, this is a, an eligible planning activity. So every brownfield site has to have some sort of either real or perceived contamination. Um, and there was some previous studies that showed that there was some soil contamination here. We also observed drums on site that were partially buried. Uh, so. In addition to assessment funds, uh, there's also brownfields cleanup funding to consider. So I want you to keep this in mind as, uh, our planning folks kind of talk about the reuse options. But the goal here is to kind of see what this site could be reused for and then identify, uh, activities where brownfields funding could be used for cleanup. Um, and there are some different funding sources for the cleanup. Uh, it could come from S and P D C who has a revolving loan fund program. Uh, they can offer subgrants and loans to eligible entities. Uh, and there's also site-specific cleanup grants that come directly from E P A. Um, so I'll turn it over to niche and I will follow up at the end to kind of discuss more about those eligible, uh, cleanup activities. Good evening, everyone. My name is Allison Evans. I'm with niche engineering. Um, we had the great opportunity of getting to know this site and envisioning three possible, um, future uses for the site. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. Um, just to give an overview of the main factors that were affecting our decision-making. Um, upon visiting the site and looking at the data, there is deep photography towards the back of the site, um, towards the brook where it kind of cuts off that, uh, western.
Where it kind of cuts off that, uh, western corner from development, otherwise. About one point two five acres of the site is, um, pretty feasible for redevelopment. Um, as Emily mentioned, there's the fire contamination that will affect, you know, some of this decision making. We have fortunately nearby access to public water and sewer of railroad Ave, so we didn't have to. Worry about any sort of well or septic on the site. Um, it is located within the town's central commercial district, the B one district. Um, that's very flexible in terms of use and dimensional requirements, which is really, um. Great for our team to be able to, um, introduce some more, um. Creative configure, creative configurations of the site. Um, and it's also within the town shoreline zoning, partially on the back with that broke, um, a designated growth area. And the route two thirty five tip district. Um, so if you go to the next slide, we also wanted to look at how the town, what the town needs for the future. Um, we looked at the, um, local economic development market analysis, the town's comprehensive plan. The downtown plan, because we're so close to downtown. And the S and P D C economic development strategy. Um, looking through these plans, a few uses came, uh, bubbled up to the top. Of course, workforce housing is a very, um, common issue here, very well, well discussed, um, established need. Um, the, particularly the economic development market analysis identified local serving retail and services as a potential gap in the area. I think it was about fifteen thousand square feet of retail. That the town could build, um, although we know. You know, downtown does have some space available. Um, and it, all, these plans also identified commercial and maker businesses as a potential, um. Economic asset in this area that then would be the larger area and maybe. In addition to just help Berwick. So moving into the scenarios. Uh, if we go to the next slide, um, just to compare and contrast, uh, the first one, we just. Focus on a single footprint but flexible use and that would be more of either a municipal use or, um, housing. Um, second was purely residential to address that workforce housing gap. And three was a mixed use, um, retail and housing option, um, to address both those gaps in commercial space and workforce housing. Um, so moving into the first one, this is our single footprint flexible use. Um, we. Initially established it as potentially a, um, extension of the town's offices, especially with D P W so close to the site. Then we moved into, but what if this could be used for housing, uh, to address that gap? So what we're looking at here is two stories of space. Um, it could potentially house eight one bedroom apartments per floor, so it could be sixteen units total. Um, that would. Run up against some current, uh, regulations within the town zoning code. But if we're here on an imaginative basis, um, it, it could definitely be used for that. Um, we also looked at it as it could house, house an indoor basketball court. It could be a community theater. Um, a tech lab, a studio space, maker room spaces. You know, may, maybe there's an opportunity to introduce those maker spaces and. Um, that were mentioned in that, uh, previous slide. Um, we've also included a remediation estimate on this. Um, most of them are very similar, but, um, this one in particular, we would be looking at one point two to one point four million. Um, and we can get into the specifics of what that remediation estimate covers as we move towards the end of the presentation.
Hi, can I just add a question?
Of course.
Um, when you say remediation, remediation estimate for each of these scenarios. Is that referring to like kind of like the work required to get the piece of property ready to go for that project?
Exactly. Um, um, items within the scope of the plan that could be covered by that brownfield spending Emily was talking about.
Okay.
So some of that is pure remediation and some of that is just site prep work that would have to be done anyway. So nothing above ground. Um. So when we were considering the scenario one, the flexible use, uh, we of course looked at the Kettering Community Center, you know, it seems to be a very, um. Uh, well loved public space, uh, in this area. We looked at potentially, you know, there, the amount of outdoor space that you could introduce, you know. Outdoor fitness for people. There could be, um, public meeting rooms, flex spaces. Um, and then of course, if you wanted to go pure housing, we've. Included some options for what that would look like at maybe a two story scale. Of course, there's a thirty five foot height limit here, um. And of course, that center bottom would be more of a community theater use, which could be stacked on top of those indoor uses that we showed on the first slide. Moving into our second one, this was where we targeted, um, the housing issue. We wanted to do a purely residential use. Uh, we have mixed multiple typologies here. Uh, so we have at the, um, middle of the site, we have those two apartment buildings. Um, those are six units each. So those would offer twelve units and then it features six. Town homes at the front, um. Looking out onto railroad Ave. Um, this one, we felt the mixing of, um, types was important in that. Perhaps the town homes could be market rate well and to help subsidize a more affordable housing option within those apartments. So totally, so in total, we're looking at eighteen, um, potential. Um, units here. Uh, I would like to note that none of these are a max build out of the site. It may be that if a. Developer were to come to you, they would cram in a few more, but we felt it was. Um, in the site's best interest to introduce, um, attractive and well thought out site plans. Um, so there's a large shares open space. There's a ninety area at the back of the site for the users. Um, there's, and there's, uh, garage parking for the town homes in this one. And they're able to run onto railroad Ave. Um, you know, that could benefit from that sidewalk project we've heard about coming along there. Um, and if we move on to the slide, we can just look at, you know, a few housing typologies. We could see. Fitting into this community on the scale, um, both town homes and small apartment buildings. Um, moving on to scenario three, this is mixed use. This is our commercial and apartment option. Um, we're looking at a gross floor area of twenty three thousand square feet, but that's not just, um, retail. Of course, that would. Be in excess of the retail that was identified earlier. Um, so I believe this one. Includes six apartment buildings and, um, on the second floor of the property and you got these two, um. L shaped buildings that can interact and really create this like cozy internal area of the site. Um, this one would also features patio use on the side. It does run up against town. Parking regulations for small businesses like hair salons or medical offices, which we felt was important to note, but. Um, could be part of a more flexible con, ongoing conversation the town is having. Um, so moving on to the next slide for, you know, how we imagine that, you know, some. Great options in Kettering, um, you know, we, we imagine as, it could be a more active outdoor site. For the users, for the businesses, you know, if you wanted to have a deli or something. Uh, we wanted to, we considered this not to be something where. People are just walking along and you stop by, maybe not necessarily a coffee shop. We don't think that would be, you know, appropriate for the surrounding neighbors, but something like a hair salon or a medical office where people would. Make it a destination in their day. Um, and so moving on to our next slide to compare the three scenarios on a purely. Um, numbers basis, we have different. Um, ball parts of first square footage. You can see obviously the residential offers, it's just the most pure build out. Um, they generally, we kept them all within the same disturbed area and that is a. Important calculation when looking at remediation. Um, you know, when it comes to what soil we're disturbing and where people will be on the site, that's a big factor. When we're looking at, um, those cost estimates for remediation. Um, we did wanna evaluate, you know, what the tax revenue potential would be for each site and these are, you know, generic ballpark, but it's something to consider also when you do the town this, I mean, these respect things. Um, and you'll notice all the way to the right that remediation cost estimate, um, it's largely the same for all of these, cause that really is based on. Um, how much of the site we're disturbing and we thought that it was important to. Um, give as much usable open space to the users of the site as possible. Um, so they're generally all in the same, and again, those, um, that involves what we discussed before. Um, so that's a very quick overview and I can hand it back to Emily for such a potent mediation somewhat.
Thanks.
Moving to the next slide. Um, so looping back around to the brownfields considerations. Um, to kind of frame this part of the presentation, something to keep in mind is that brownfields can. Get this type of property set up for redevelopment, so it's not purely just remediation. Um, there are certainly some things to do in terms of. Reducing the amount of contamination at the site, but it's also. Uh, something that can happen in conjunction with redevelopment. Um, so some of the eligible brownfields costs here are removal of those drums that I mentioned earlier. Um, I do wanna note, they don't pose any sort of, you know, immediate hazard. These drums have been on the site since. The factory burned down in the late fifties. Uh, so at this point, it's remove all those drums, remediation of the soil around those drums. Um, management of soil during redevelopment activities, so whatever it needs to be. Um, excavated to facilitate these new buildings and all of the nuclear exterior areas. Um, the hardscapes and softscapes themselves, along with the building foundations, will serve as a cap and cover system to prevent, uh. Exposure and contact with contaminated soil that may remain on site. Um, and because. It's unlikely that the, the groundwater at the site would be suitable for drinking water, the brownfields funding could also. Most likely pay for a water supply connection from the street into, um, the new buildings here. Um, and another thing to mention is that this is all something that will be done with the oversight of the main D E P and the EPA. Um, ensuring protection of human health and the environment. Um, so to, sorry. So to go back to the, uh, available brownfields funding, uh, I mentioned the S and P D C and, um. The main department of economic and community development, uh, both those entities have brownfields revolving loan funds. Um, and those entities can provide grants and loans. Um, only certain entities are eligible for sub grants. Those would be towns and nonprofits. And through a brownfields R L F fund, there is a five hundred thousand dollar cap on sub grants. Um, and loans, there's no cap and any entity could receive, but brownfields are a left one. Uh, thinking about the site specific cleanup grants that are correct from EPA, um, again. Only, uh, towns or nonprofits are eligible for those and the, those entities must maintain ownership of the site. Um, those grants are more competitive. Um, and I do have to mention that the future of funding through those grants is uncertain at the moment. Um, typically, that those funding amounts would be a bit larger than R L Fs, but, um, there's really no guarantee at the moment. So these are all things that should be considered, uh, moving forward with potential redevelopment, whether the town maintains ownership for a certain period of time. Or, uh, an affordable housing developer, other nonprofit maintains ownership, or if it was mine to flip for, to a for profit developer. Uh, but there are many different combinations to consider, um. There are a lot of different possibilities, so, um, as a town forward with this project, I encourage you all to reach out to Reagan, um, and myself and we can help advise.
Do you have a question before? Uh, yeah, over.
This question actually might be more for Tim. So we own this land, correct?
Right.
So if we wanted to do anything except for a single footprint flexible use, um, whether it was community or public outdoor space. Would we be looking at selling the land for it to be developed or would we become landlord landlords?
I'm going to defer that question to Paul Schumacher, cause he probably has a better answer than I do, so. Follow up. I agree. Uh, can you repeat that aside and, uh?
I don't remember what I said. Okay. Uh, so if we wanted to do a single footprint flexible use, which would be a community or public outdoor space.
Right.
If we were going to do apartments or would we become landlords or would we be looking at selling the property for a developer to take over? And they get apartments, workforce housing, affordable housing?
Um, I think you could work it a number of different ways. I mean, the town could, you know, maintain ownership of the property and lease, you know, um. Uh, i- i- you know, if you had a, you know, a, a nonprofit housing developer come in. Um, you could work out a lease arrangement with them. But, you know, I think the, the critical thing is here is to make, is to ensure that grant funding. It, you, you wanna, you wanna try to, that, that, you know, find grant funding. And, um, you, you, you need to do that with either a nonprofit or municipal ownership. Now, there's a possibility that, um, you could work out an arrangement with a private, private entity who might do some market rate housing and some affordable housing and then something else. So. I mean, there are just a whole bunch of different ways that you can make this work. Um, but I think the critical thing is, is that there's. Funding available, particularly on the affordable housing side to get some things done. Um, and I think, you know, the other, on the other hand, uh, the other side of that is that on the, on the, uh, for, uh, you know, it was a private developer and they wanted to come in and, and, and have the town. Work with the town on, uh, you know, on, on, on a housing project. The loans are very low interest. S and P D C is very capable of sort of working out an arrangement so that it works for everybody. So it, 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 it is just. There's a whole range of different opportunities that you can, you might be able to do there. Which could be a combination of public and private ownership.
So, so with that being said, um, what is our timeline in trying to make a decision? Cause I imagine with. Funding being uncertain, it's almost. We need to make a decision sooner rather than later, what we'd like to do with this lot so we can jump on any kind of funding. You know, that is available. Do we have like a timeline hope for this? With resolving what we might wanna do here?
You know, one of the, uh. You know, and I would, I don't wanna be a downer here, but, um, these projects take a while. Um, there's federal money involved. There's S and P D C money. There's a bunch of hoops to jump through. The other factor that we need to consider. Which is very somewhat problematic is that the new foreclosure, um, rules that came around, I think, last year. We need to do an appraisal of property. There's issues related to us trying to find the prior owners. Um, who left us a house at its waste site. And didn't pay their taxes, but we're supposed to sort of. Try to find them and, you know, uh, approach them about whether they in fact may want the partial still. So, I mean, that would almost be one of the next steps. So. Um, I, I think, you know, and S and P D C can speak to this better than I can, um, you know, the, it. The funding, they have a pool of funding. And I think the brownfield program appears to be like not. Under the gun like someone, other federal programs, but maybe I'm speaking out of turn there, but I do think that there is funding out there. Um, and I think on the housing side. If you're looking for grant funding, if we can build in sort of an affordable component to a housing project, it would probably be. Very helpful or, or advantageous to the town to try to do that.
Well, out of this is. Here. The brownfield project's been around for. Quite a few years. And it's a methodical stem process forward, so. In reality, you know, we're looking at cleaning the site first and then. As, uh, Paul said, you know, doing the research on that. There's nothing that's gonna happen tomorrow, next week, next month. You know, w- we're methodically going through the process, but it realistically could be. Several, several years could be a year.
I mean. I mean, I think it, it all kind of depends on the momentum that the town has. Um, you know, if you guys wanna push it forward and make it happen, S and P C is ready to support you and make that happen. Usually the, the timing is about, uh, getting in other brands in- involved and interested, right? And whatever sort of foreclosure things you're gonna have to go through. One of the things I wanted to clarify that I wasn't sure was clear in the remediation piece is that. Those eligible costs that Emily was listing in that remediation cost estimate. A lot of that work is done as a normal part of. Uh, construction on a site, right? So the site work that they would have to do to cut soil and level the site the way they wanna do it, they can do the cleanup of that soil at the same time. So there is some, maybe a little bit of potential for the town to do cleanup ahead of time. Maybe those drums is something to think about. But a lot of those cleanup costs are things that can happen at the exact same time as whatever redevelopment is happening. So it's, that's part of the reason why it's kind of important to know where you want the site to go in order to get the remediation kind of moving along with it. Think about the remediation funding as a catalyst for whatever that future redevelopment is. It's funding that can go towards that. Yeah.
And we're in, just a question on, on, uh, on grants. So are these? The, the, I get, I understand there's different types of grants, but are they dependent upon us having like a full blown out land for the property? Or like, I, I'm kinda trying to figure out what is our. It sounds like some foreclosure, investigating the foreclosure stuff that Paul was referring to seems like a logical next step for the town. But then. Like, do we need to go through the process to obtain a grant to then clean up the site and then we. Sit for a little while and then we try to develop her or do we kind of need to just coordinate?
That's one path.
Okay.
Right? That's one path. You'd probably be eligible for a lot less anyway, because first of all, the sub grants have a cap, right? But. Um, the amount of cleanup that you would probably do, that makes sense for you to do before a developer takes ownership of the site is gonna be less than what a developer would do sort of all at once as part of that redevelopment. Part of what Paul was saying, there's all these different directions. These projects are very, really very unique and it can go in very many directions. So I think the, to clarify about the grants, um, do you need a fully fledged plan? Yes and no. In order to have an accurate cost estimate of what those remediation costs are, it is really important to have a site redevelopment plan. So these three scenarios. Give us the ability to say, okay, well, if you wanted that, you know. So these three scenarios give us the ability to say, okay, well, if you wanted that, you know, single footprint, we can then get a cost estimate that says, well, your foundation's gonna cost this much and that's gonna be eligible, so you can kind of build that budget out for your grant. Or for the loan that that developer does or whatever, right? So the it also kind of depends on how much you wanna be involved. Do you wanna take on that part of that cleanup? There there's a path where that can work. If you wanna say, we have this great potential redevelopment site, and we wanna bring in somebody else to move this along, right? And your part in the process is, you know, giving giving this site the uh the the bright path, saying you want this developed here, who can do that? Then that, then that's the role you can play. So there there are lots of, yeah. Which I know is can be overwhelming, but yeah.
One more question.
Yeah.
In this whole study, I was just wondering if we, if um anybody connected with um the Water District, which is not obviously an entity of the town, it's an own, it's their own separate department, because right now, we have a lot of very unhappy campers in town where we don't have an adequate supply, water supply, especially in drought conditions. And I'm concerned if we pound in, you know, all of these multi-town houses and the do did anybody reach out to the Water District to see if we actually have, they had the water supply for the capacity of those types of buildings?
I have, we have. Yeah, we don't care about that. No.
Yes, as well, yeah.
So, they, yeah, so we met with the Water District. The Water District has a big master, master um improvement plan in the works currently. So currently, they have the four wells and trying to get four more, or two wells, no, four wells. They have four wells, they need, they have two old ones that are not being used right now, they're gonna try to get those up and running, because filtration system costs a lot of us down today. Do that, so they're hoping to get those up and running in the next year, so. And then they have two new ones, they have drilled already, and I'm waiting for some more development to get the roads up in there and get the waters tested and so forth, so their goal in the next year or two is to get four more wells on to have eight wells. That will improve our capacity. So that that piece, yeah, we kind of looked at that already.
And so, and so it's now given like the potential to add housing. Uh like, and that's what kind of one of the things we're talking about, that's a good thing to just add to the Water District.
Yeah, um. I'm not sure who it is, or I'm I'm wondering about the process, and maybe this is a couple steps ahead, but where it's town, land, town, all that stuff, what would be the process for planning board approval and making sure that the town is following all the rules that a regular person would have to?
Um so it it is um basically law that you have to follow your, no matter who you are, you have to follow your uh your zoning ordinances. Um so the town is not exempt from um from going outside of that. Um so any type of development, you would go outright, um and so you do have a couple options when you're talking about development and about like basically town-sponsored development, um in this way, you can either sell it outright and just allow the provisions themselves to control what's gonna be built there. You can sell it with conditions and callbacks, so, hey, we will sell this to you developer if you develop this and under these conditions, and if you get your approvals, and if it's not um built itself within a a number of time, you you can clawback provisions where we then go back and own the land again. Uh it's called a clawback position. Um the the next option is that you can just choose not to sell it, and you can just outright lease the land itself. Allow the developer to make the decisions to what's going on the land, and they can go through their process of going to be paying um uh for decision. Or you can go what's called the gusto way, which is um not selling it and going through our ourselves as a town, the approval process of exactly this is what we want to get built. And then going out um before a developer to build that thing uh under their, under their provision and leasing out that that property. Um and so there there's a number of ways that you can go about that, but each of those have to go through the approval process just like anyone else.
So at that, at that point, um Council of Costella's question would be clearly addressed at that point, because the water in the sewer would need to be addressed at that time, correct?
Yes.
And so um really like looking at the uh the uh imaginary stuff and and the plans, it's always fun. Um but I'm unclear as to what we need to do at this point as a, as a council, if anything.
So this is step one B, so to speak, in the process. So we've got to point out, we identified it's a hasn't, hasn't a site and it's cleaned up. Is, it has Reagan has pointed out, it's grant funding for um the cleanup of this site, so the next part of that, this project going forward is Reagan spoke about, is at some point, we're gonna have to decide what surely coming up, and I say surely, could be probably the next six months or something. You are gonna, there's nothing to do tonight, this is national. So with the Kyle and Paul and S M P D C and and Mitch Engineering, we needed to get like some ideas to present to you, get you thinking of, this is what the site can use. Um and then eventually, at some point, we're gonna need to make that decision after we do more research and do a little more testing and figure everything out, we're gonna come back to you and say, okay, now, you wanna develop the site, you would, just follow all the options that the Kyle would just give you, will be your options. And you'll have to make those decisions at some point, not tonight. This is just an informational meeting to show you the potential that's there. So down the road, I don't know if you wanna speak any into that any further, but you know, at some point, we're we're giving you this information to make you start thinking about it. And then at some point, after we do more fact finding on, you know, the the foreclosure case and the, as Paul said, the finding role of this property and then and Paul spoke about, we have to get a valuation of this appraisal, so we have to get that. All these things gonna kind of move forward with all the other projects we're doing. And then at some point, we'll come back and say, okay, now we're, we need you to make some, I can start thinking about making hard decisions. Not tonight, it's not by Christmas, probably not. Anytime, you know, but probably by spring with the, you know, you know, you should with all the other stuff we have going, we should be able to get some stuff accomplished, but. As follows.
Well, you know, I, um yeah, I'm sorry, I know the call that wants to jump in here, and I don't wanna grind grind too much on this, but I I think, you know, Melissa, to your question, and it it's it's very hard to be very specific about which ways it's gonna go, because again, there are a lot of options. I think there's two uh projects which S M P D C had worked on recently, which I think are um different in scale, but um you know, down in Kittery, um the town took a piece of the property by foreclosure a few years ago, um S M P D C spent money, and you guys correct me if I go astray, um spent money to clean that, and and is currently cleaning it up. The town is then going to transfer that property to Fair Tide. And I don't know if there's cash involved or not, but um as far as the transfer, but um they are gonna, you know, provide them the, you know, the property and then Fair Tide's gonna build, I think, six or eight affordable housing units on that property, and actually, they may need additional cleanup funds as the property is being developed, because there's still some things that need to be tapped and covered. The other one, which is like way different than what we're talking about, is in Berwick. I mean, that was the brownfields project, the old prime tanning site. That was S M P D C is very, I mean, there's a ton of money in their brownfields money, I mean, like millions. So, um and the way that evolved was, um it was privately, the, you know, the tannery went under, it was taken over by a, you know, holding corporation or whatever. Um nothing was gonna happen with that parcel, but the town um and worked this out, um took ownership of the parcel, so they could then apply for the grants to clean the property up. And then there was an arrangement where, once the property was clean, the town then transferred the property back to the private entity, because the town didn't want to have anything to do with like developing a ten acre site in the middle of downtown Berwick. So they they um took the site, uh they they gave the site back to the developer, and that's where they are. And you know, redeveloping a couple hundred housing uh units of housing in downtown Berwick and recreating the downtown. So, I mean, that's, they're they're two different projects, but they're, you know, I mean, so you can just see that it's, it's got a bunch of different ways to think about.
Yeah. It sounds like um the, just to, because again, I kinda wanna bring this back to like, what is the action toward the council, or kind of what is the kind of horizon, I guess, for the council? I mean, it sounds like in the near term, the foreclosure investigation of these properties is important, the appraisal process for these properties is important. Those are things that need to happen regardless, and I think it would be appropriate for, uh I'll say, our new council, given we have an election and we'll potentially have three members. Um this actually should be a priority for the new council to kind of start getting a little bit more clear on what we'd like to speed there, I like, I I if I'm hearing everyone correctly, it's sounding like we kinda need to get clear on what we want, what type of thing we want, and then from there, that'll help us kind of refine what processes to have to take.
Yeah, and and so even like before, what you actually want built there is really outline your priorities for the site itself.
Yeah.
Um and and making the decision, you know, one, if you want something to be built there, if you want this to be, you know, a town space or what have you, it's really outlining your priorities, and then we work you know, from your priorities, we work to make that. Yeah.
Um I think for the, for the future, and maybe even now, could I have an explanation for more clarity around hazardous for this site, um I'm concerned about the abutters, and I'm concerned about the brook, and I'm concerned about rain washing into the brook and then going across, and what are the people going to be saying, oh my gosh, this is hazardous? Can we, can you talk me off a ledge, I guess?
Yeah, so I think hazardous is a term that to me has a very specific meaning, because I, you know, I see the regulatory definition. Um I would, this site is not hazardous by definition. So there are no immediate threats to public health or the environment. Um there, as I mentioned, there has been some soil testing done. That soil contamination is not gonna mobilize, as far as we understand it, based on the testing that has been done. Um I will also note that main D E P has reviewed the available information. Um main D E P also does not feel like any immediate action is warranted. Um so what we're looking at is really remediation to facilitate redevelopment. Um there are no, you know, immediate hazard.
Thank you very much, and um I would, I would request that the the future council uh keep that as a priority uh for communication moving forward, just to keep it clear, because it'll be easy to forget, so, thank you.
And just one last follow-up on that, so I know the site is a stand, um you said it's it's a no wreck, but like, once we start touching it, does that shift any of that? Does the, once we start construction, does that increase the exposure or not?
No, you are, absolutely. Um yeah, so there are some exposure concerns during the work itself. Um the controls will be put in place to make sure that the workers who are on site uh don't have any unreasonable exposures, so they'll all have to wear protective equipment. Um if necessary, there may be some dust monitoring to make sure nothing is mobilizing offsite. And for the future residents or visitors, they will be protected through that cap and cover system, which is the hard steeps and the soft steeps that will prevent contact with the contamination that may remain.
Last chance, any other questions from the council? I mean, I, there's many of you here who I think are here that haven't spoken, I wanna give everyone a chance if there's anything else you'd like to add. Um for those, I think I have S M P D C, I've got the town here, I've got niche engineering, I think I got all of um T R C, T R C, thank you all for being here tonight, we very much appreciate this work, um I think we have some difficult decisions to make. Uh but um thank you for coming out tonight, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but do not feel like you need to, we understand. All right, um that wraps up our first report presentation, um Carlo is also joining us to give us an update on current impacts of town.
Sure, absolutely, um. It it's funny, because S M P D C helped us out with this map, um and they're here. Um so so basically, we digitized our parking downtown, um and you're gonna have to zoom out so you all could see the those parking spaces. Um and you'll see that it's your public parking spaces that are labeled as public, public parking spaces, and people use public parking spaces. Are I mean, uh are pretty much along our major corridors um in downtown. Um and and doing the maps, the the map is actually on this uh, on this map as well. You add it up, you have seven hundred forty-five parking spots downtown. Um so we do have an excess of parking by definition, um and it's it it's gonna be, okay, well, now we would need to talk about like, you know, is the parking accessible for the different uses and things like that? Uh what type of parking is appropriate for different uses going forward? Um but by numbers, uh we do have an excess of parking in town that can uh accommodate uh more intense uses if you chose to go that way. Uh but right now, we know this, this is just a a way to be able to visualize. And if you wanted to do more studies, because now we have this digitized, within like a five minute walk or ten minute walk, we can be able to do those type of studies. Um so that's why we thought it was important to do this for any type of future uh planning efforts.
Are we depending on like public sheathes on our website or?
Yes, in our G I S.
Great.
Yeah, and so that's one of the layers um that um are requested to be uploaded to our G I S. Um and then, you know, going forward, when we're doing wavefinding and everything, we'll we'll make quicker your maps, this is more just to get the basic information in. Um and to to make sure that we ourselves um has this estimation, information regularly available.
Great.
Question? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought when I was at the post office at one time or another, that it says that we have public parking at M and T Bank. But aren't there signs there that say parking for M and T Bank customers only? So where is that divided?
Only in those exact spaces where it says M and T Bank, uh only parking. If those are the spaces that are reserved for M and T Bank. The same thing with the investment housing across the street, only in the spots that says reserved for that parking is that, that parking reserve for the, for those uses.
So there's nine spaces in the M and T Bank lot that aren't those spaces that are. I wouldn't guess there were more parking spaces.
No.
And and it's because it's not, it's not signed.
Yeah.
And so everyone just assumes that, oh, this is just all great businesses and all who are invested and such.
I wonder if that's something that we should consider as we move forward, like accurately marking a space, like, yes, you can park here.
Yeah.
As versus you can't park here.
But our wavefinding
Yeah.
actually starts off on October first, and that's one of the priorities that we have to make sure that it's marked um appropriately for these, these public parking spaces.
No, that'll work well with the mixed beach.
Yeah.
Absolutely, for everybody involved.
Yep.
Um so no action from us on this, right? We, this is just an informational.
This is just information.
Definitely question? Thanks, Bob.
Sure. Okay, the next one too.
Oh, you're, you're, well, hold on, we gotta, okay, so that's our second report presentation.
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Put a comment first.
Um uh we'll both report that and jump out like that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm in a room that would like to speak about anything. Anyone on? Okay. Um we went to unfinished business number one, we did some water study. I will just kind of tee up our actually, probably might just kind of set in that brush.
Absolutely, um back in Janglory, uh we were looking, it's one of our parties for downtown Robust Station and our comp plan, uh just looking to getting a war source, um a uh central war source for Pumpkin Town, um because they're all on wells, um that was one of the the biggest things that was um basically inhibiting uh the development of those sites. Um and we looked for a quote uh for those, um we we received a quote, um and then we were looking for other quotes. Uh so I've been chasing engineering uh companies uh behind them for the last like seven to eight months. And and in order to get you all some more quotes, um some were initially promising, and they said they could do it, and then they actually started to scope uh the progress, and they said, absolutely not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do this. So um it it just turns out at the end of this, um that two companies um were able to give us quotes. Um, and they're, they're both within budget, um, and they both are, are, are well known with our water district. Um, and they're willing to work with the town and worry that they're, um, in a problem. Um, why this is important is because we need an estimate of cost of actually getting a, a central water system up for Pumpkin Town. In order to get that, we have to understand if the water is available and how much it, it possibly could cost, uh, for developing that water source. Um, and so this is all the background work before we can get everything up. Um, and, uh, for both quotes, uh, those studies will only take about two months. Uh, and so we will know that information, um, relatively, relatively quickly.
Is this, um, I guess the question, is, is the outcome of this study, I guess, is the, is the goal to have this be water source from the sewer district? Or potentially wells, or is that part of the, kind of the point of the study is to figure out what makes sense?
Uh, so the point of the study is, one, we've already, uh, looked into extending water service, service down from our water district. Um, and that's, uh, basically the water district, um, and ourselves at a degree that's not feasible. Uh, because you would have to go back and upsize all the pipes, um, in order to gym, go down to Pumpkin Town. Um, and so, and instead of that, they're looking at a satellite water system that would eventually connect back up to the water district. Um, and so the, the thinking behind this is that the people of Pumpkin Town would be responsible for basically managing the centralized water system. Until it connects and then ownership within, switch over to the water district, um, uh, in that way. And so it's basically, it's thinking a, a few steps ahead here, um, is there a water source? And so, uh, see if we can actually develop a water source. How much would it be to actually develop that water source in a way that connect with our, our water district lines, um, when, um, when they are available?
Well.
How's the, how is, I don't know how sewer water gets to everywhere. Um, and my mind right now is saying, and why am I asking the taxpayer to put? Water at Pumpkin Town, which as a counselor, I want water up there so we can help develop it. Only to create the well and the source to help the water district to. Is, it's just helping them get worse. So help me understand, like, is there a payment back?
Yeah.
Or is, you know, a seller?
So it's actually not for the water district, the main purpose of it is for, uh, Pumpkin Town itself. They do not have a centralized water system, which means that their industrial uses, you cannot use heavy industrial uses without a centralized water system. You can't have, um, additional housing units or anything of that type in the area, which we know will be required in two years. We will have to allow residential uses in that system. Um, and so the alternate, if we do not give them a centralized water system, is that they all will be on wells. Um, and then that's a whole different, um, other set of, of problems if they're in well system. And so this is a part of our exploratory of going, you know, how, how much would it be, uh, would it cost for us? To, will, will, for everyone to, to, to be able to put this up? In addition to that, the money is actually coming from their tip district. So that's what's funding this, is the Pumpkin Town tip district. Um, and so it's, it's literally their own tax dollars funding the resources.
Right, uh, the taxpayers, all of the taxpayers.
No, no, this is directly from the.
And so this, in that yellow, well, sorry, you're not on the slide, in the yellow area for the Pumpkin Town. So this would be to create, rather than the blue lines for the water district, this would be a green line system. That is South Burwick water up in Pumpkin Town that will not be, you know, attached to anything. Cause you mentioned something about the water district.
Yeah.
I, so I was thinking that there was going to be an interconnect at some point.
It, it may be an interconnect sometime in the way future. What you want to do is, is plan for the eventuality, if it's possible, ten, twenty years down the line. So you connect into the system, you don't want to design a system that has never been able to interconnect.
Yeah, I got you, so we're not being on an island on its own.
Correct.
For, yeah. Twenty seventy-five or something like that.
Yeah.
Gotcha, thank you.
So we worked with Wright Pierce in the past with several projects, so we have, you know, familiarity, um, with them. Do either of these, have, has anybody worked with B H B before?
Yes.
So you have familiarity with that.
Yeah.
So my question to Carlo is something that, um, popped out to me in my B H B's, um, applicant, or, uh, information. Was that they had a whole list of services not included. Um, two things that jumped out to me that I was a little concerned about, both one was site visits and presentations at town meetings. Um, I think that the council, what are all very concerned about how things there are and getting information from. Um, so a presentation, you know, to the town and things like something that we, I would hope that we would want, you know, to do. Even if it might not, I used to get it as well, just, you know, we don't understand it. Um, and then with Wright Pierce, um, they, they didn't list services that weren't included. But they did list potential future tasks that might involve from this. So do you see, um, how do you feel about, um, a, this not having like a town meeting included? Or a site visit excluded, do you think those are two very important things to have, uh, with something like this or not so important?
Not so much because it's just a study. Um, when it comes time, what comes after this is when we start actually talking about real funds, when potentially real funds being put to this. Then absolutely, at that time, you, you really are going to need those presentations, by finding everything. What this is really, it's just an exploratory study of, do they actually have water? And then trying to give some estimates of cost of, if we were thinking of doing this thing of, 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 of working with the, the property owners. And getting the water source, in, in general terms, how much would that cost? Um, and so you can do some creature planning with that hip district at the one, like, well, how will this be funded? Um, and you can start discussions with the property owners that are, uh, within the tip district and, and yourselves. About how, um, we would fund such a, a thing if that's possible.
I'm thinking about this similar to how we did, it, it was a while ago, but we routed sewer from Martin High School. Kind of across two thirty-six to source Pumpkin Town is a kind of a incentive, I guess, for, for business development there. Because sewer is kind of important for someone to have a business, um, and I kind of view this as similar. And I do, I do, there's part of me that's like, why didn't you do this back then? Um, you consider the water thing back then, you know, um, but I guess like that's how I think about it. And so just, I just want to be really clear, this is a study to determine how, how, or rather if. How and how, uh, roughly how much it would be to provide a water source for that area. To then foster additional development in the future.
Correct.
Question?
No, other than, no, uh, basic statement, well, thank you, DiCarlo, again, for looking into this and getting all this rolling. Um, the town has been very vocal that they want us to bring in more businesses to supplement the tax base. If you don't have water, it's awful hard to bring a business in, if you drill a well and you get too many wells, you're running into the problem. So I think it's well worth the investment to immediately go there. Because again, if you don't build all the industrial parks, we have to make it desirable so people can go there.
Oh, yeah.
So. Part of the purpose of doing this, which is exactly what Council James was referring to. Um, some years ago, somebody here had a vision, they pumped a ton of industrial park, right? And then they built the businesses, so under main D E P laws. If you have, if you provide any kind of service to the public, where you serve them water or food, or anything that you could use. Bottle of water that they have to drink or food they have to take in. Um, and you're on a well, you have to test your water every week and send it to main D E P. And it has to be kept records of and all this stuff, and it's really, so that really recludes the fact that. So someone's looking for an industrial side or commercial side, right? One of the things they're going to look at is to look at our stuff and how much that might cost there, and then look at York or Kennybunk or another town. It may have municipal water supply attached to the industrial. So kind of the purpose behind this, this study is to launch us to that next step that isn't possible. And it's, so how is it possible? And so how much would that cost? We can guess about it, but without the study can prove to us that, you know, it's, it's difficult to imagine. And so, and we just ran water up to there, it's wide side of two thirty-six and so on, you know, I mean, they're right next to us, so they didn't even have to go that long.
Okay, so it sounds like, um, I mean, I think I'm just kind of, I think the consensus from the council is that this is a study you probably want to do. But I think that, that, um, business before us tonight is we need to pick one of these vendors, right?
I mean, they're literally less than a thousand dollar bids apart. I really think that we might want to look towards administration who might be able to guide us better with who to select. Um, like I said, their scope of services were pretty, pretty similar, so.
Uh, and so I can, I can give a little bit insight for that, um, and so our current water district, um, uses, um, uh, they don't use V H B. They use, uh, uh, Wright Pierce, um, and so that is a mark for them. Um, however, on the other side, um, uh, as far as the, uh, the planning goes, V H B is a little bit stronger on, um, on estimates. On, um, future growth as far as residential goes and anything like that. Um, as, as far as their type of analysis, because I actually know the, um. Uh, I, I'm, I'm well aware of the, the planning expertise of the planning on the V H B side.
So much like down the way here into new business, whether you're looking for a change in a different set of eyes. I'm all for having a different engineering firm, uh, looking at this just to separate it. And we have two sets of eyes looking at it instead of, yeah, this is run in the middle, this is what we do, this is what you have. I, I would be more inclined to go V H B, just because they're doomed, they haven't dealt with this and that's, that's my two cents.
You can go.
Yeah.
If either of the two of them.
Yeah, it's a win-win about how you read.
I'm gonna suggest the same thing, basically for the same reasons, so, um, you know, we worked with Wright Pierce, Wright Pierce is sort of like the water, with the water to start. Yeah, sometimes adding a little variety is, I think, good and different for started.
I agree.
Okay. All right, I will go ahead and make a motion to allow the town manager to sign a contract with V H B for nineteen thousand two hundred dollars. To put a water study to be paid with the Pumpkin Town to tip desert funds.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, we need discussion? That's all you need from us tonight?
That's it.
Great, um, any, no discussion? All of the favors say aye, done?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Done?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed for you. Thank you, DiCarlo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now go home.
Good night. Um, all right, uh, my first business unfinished business, um, legal R and D. Uh, so the town council, um, we met last week, uh, September sixteenth. Um, the town council staff, we conducted interviews with two law firms, um, interested in, uh, supporting the town and representing the towns. Um, and, um, we are prepared to even to sign an engagement letter, uh, with, uh, with the law firm. Of the council, of the council branch, and, um, I think that's something that's clear, if anyone has anything.
I just wanted to thank the staff again and, um, the council, I think that it was a very productive meeting and very well set together, so.
Um, all right, um, I think then what we're looking for this evening is for, um, a motion to operate the town manager to sign an engagement letter. With Drummond and Woodson, um, as the top of town councils, or sorry, the Thomas software.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All of the favors say aye, done?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Done?
All right.
Aye. For zero.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have unfinished, unfinished business number three, employee handbook update. I have that Tim and Betsy, Jen, and then so, so I've been working on our employee handbook for quite a while. Um, I know, I understand that we're at a point where it's ready for kind of the town council guides, and so we're looking to schedule a little workshop for this. Um, the town manager has, um, recommended, um, the leak of October seventh, which I'm going to just say, I cannot make that entire week. I'm going to be out gone, um, so I'm going to.
Well, if we can just go the next week out.
Yeah, all right. Just looking at the calendar, or so our council meetings in October are the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
No, I know it's the seventh and twenty.
Okay. If, if it's the seventh, I'm not going to.
No, that's fine, I must look the calendar wrong, my apologies.
I think we're the fourteenth. Uh, how long?
Yeah, I counted wrong.
It should be just one night, so a little preview of this, first off, um, some of you, you two are, or nobody else was. When I first came here, that was one of the tasks, the council, I got hired, um, in twenty twenty-one, but the task. It's been a massive project, thank Ken and Betsy and the lawyers. So this project has been going on for a while, it's really been, it's a year of working on it. Um, Betsy, uh, HR consultant has developed, you know, took our old stuff and put all the new stuff down. But it's then gone to Matt Harris Savage at Virgin Shore, he made all his changes, went back to Betsy, she's finalized it, so. Been vetted twice, um, gets us to a place where it's up to date. So what we're going to ask the council, we'll have one workshop, we'll basically go over it. It's all the legal changes, the word changes, the policy changes, it brings it up to date and makes it modern and user friendly. And, um, it's targeting the way it's supposed to be, so we have a tremendously reduced liability having this policy. Policy addresses all people, including elected officials, municipal officials, employees. Um, so it should just take one night, I'm hoping one night unless there's a lot of question, but it should just be one night. Pretty, we're asking Betsy to give us a list of, you know, what this was and what this changed to, so that we can just cross-reference one to the other for you. But I, I can assure you, we spent all the hours, we probably, I don't know, ten, twelve hours with Betsy.
Yeah.
Um, going word for word, end to end to get this right. And another, you know, Matt spent another couple hours on it, so we really put a lot of time and effort into this, so very happy with the outcome of the product. The big piece is you're gonna repeal chapter thirty-one, which is our current personnel policy. You'll repeal that as an ordinance, and we'll ask you to put this into effect as a policy. So that then we can just, you can make changes at a meeting by your vote, by a majority vote. So when the state law changes, there's something we're going to change in that policy. Uh, it's still very much enforceable, still all that stuff, it's just, we don't have to go through the ordinance process, we can just go through the policy process. Bring it to you, you vote on it, then we can change it, update. So it shouldn't be one night, I hope, it'll be, probably takes a couple hours.
Okay. I was gonna suggest our off, I would suggest October twenty-first, that's our, will be our off night, um, so we'll, we'll meet regularly on fourteen and the twenty-eighth. Um, does that work for everyone to do, like six, six thirty on the twenty-first?
The dark back can make anything work enough.
Um, okay. I will go ahead and make a motion to schedule a workshop for the town council to review our employee handbook. Um, policy changes on Tuesday, October twenty-first at six o'clock? Yeah?
Sure.
That work for everyone?
Yep.
To be held here at town hall, probably in the first floor meeting room. And I got it.
Done.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion in a second, all of them in favor of meeting on October twenty-first, talk about the employee handbook. Done?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed for you. Thank you, everybody, sorry, I'm the difficult person there. Um, all right, moving on to new business number one, potential board appointment, I will just, um, go ahead and, um, make a motion to, um, cable. Um, so, so we, I, just to explain, we were, um, had a little bit of confusion, you're supposed to have an interview today. Maybe Tom Collins, Tom Collins for the, for the field, um, that, um, didn't happen today. So we're, I'm just going to make a motion to cable new business number one until after that interview occurs.
Done.
Thank you, um, we have a motion in a second. All of the favors say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Done. I, motion passed for zero, and I will go ahead and make a motion to schedule an interview. Ideally with Mr. Collins on Tuesday, October fourteenth. Um, sometime in the window of like six to six thirty. Um sometime in the window of like six to six thirty. Tonight.
Done.
All those in favor, schedule an interview with Mister Collins, say aye, done.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
I, motion passed for zero. Moving on to new business number two, uh. Alright, um we also received two applications for the library board, um specifically Kathy Crafts and Anna Thoros. Um and so we thank them for their applications, and our next order of business would be to schedule interviews with both of them. Um I will suggest that we attempt to schedule interviews for them the same night as Mister Collins, that we just did, um. And so try to schedule those interviews for October fourteenth. Um so I'll go ahead and make a motion to schedule interviews with. Um Kathy Crafts and Anna Thoros, both for the library board on Tuesday, October fourteenth. In the window of five forty five to six thirty P M, and I will be the kind of.
So you would like me to do five forty five to six thirty?
Like ideally, we could have one person at five forty five, one at six, one at six seventeen.
Do that.
That work?
Yes.
And if, and if that does not work, for the candidates, we can push on to the next meeting. Okay, we have a motion on the table to schedule those interviews, any? Then we have second, thank you, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, done.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye, done.
Aye.
I, motion passed for zero. Okay, new business number three. General assistance ordinance update, uh. So the state's published updated appendices, um A R H, um and general assistance housing maximums for recovery residences. Um this is the housekeeping item, it's something that the council is required by state law to adopt this into our. Um mobile general assistance ordinances, and so this is very much kind of an administrative step. Um but just wanted to explain that a little bit. Need to schedule a public hearing in order to adopt these changes, um and it's recommended that we have scheduled that public hearing for October fourteenth. Um tenant, Jen, or anything else I'm missing on that?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, um alright, I will go ahead and make a motion um to set a public hearing for October fourteenth, two thousand twenty twenty five. At six thirty P M, here on the third floor of town hall, um to adopt it for. The recent changes from the state board, generalists.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, done.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Done. Aye, motion passed for you. Alright, new business number four, the license renewal, um you have an application to renew the license for the stage house in.
Madam Chair, I move we vote to approve the liquor license for the stage house in, they are a business in good standing. The fire department or the police department.
Becker. Thank you, um we have a motion on the table, any other discussions? All of the favor, we have our license for the stage house in, okay, I just. Done.
Aye.
Aye.
I, motion passed with four zero. And uh new business number five, practicing the special amusement permit for the stage house in.
There, approved the special amusement permit for the stage house in, again, business in good standing, no complaints. And I also move that we waive the public hearing based on set precedents.
Second.
Thank you very much, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor approving the social abuse permit for stage house in, say aye, done.
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Two months for you. Alright, that takes care of all our, all our regular business. Tim and Jen, give us the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um finishing on the sidewalk and all the drive. The highway boundless field group, goal of new farm actors, aligned up the training of the group on nine twenty two, and winter preparations have begun. Police family had three arrests, thirteen accidents, hundred and eight traffic stops. Um traffic, traffic officer, the firearms instructor, so we've, I've been on the road for the past week, he'll be continuing trucking this week. Um as well, some art qualifications that'll need to be completed, and then it'll be back on the road. Interestingly enough, um I talked to Chief Rucker. Um we agreed that we wanted to pull the stats for all of York County. The last two weeks to see how our stats as traffic stops are matching up against everybody else. And I'm very pleased to tell you that the town of South Borough has most traffic stops in the county. They're busy, they're, they have someone pull over on a fairly regular basis, which is what you'd ask us to do.
As sir.
So there you go. So uh Chief Rucker has done the stats, and we'll start having some stats for you. Um but Chief Rucker said the next closest one to us was a town south of us, just through the water. With twenty eight traffic stops in the last two weeks, we had a hundred and eight.
Great. What, what's your account?
Down there, yeah. But there are twenty eight traffic stops in two weeks, we're at a hundred and eight. So if anybody just talks about traffic, really doing the most traffic stops in all of the country, every two weeks. Uh fire department's had fourteen calls in the last two weeks, and to add to that, three hundred and forty three. Uh they've received five new applicants, membership recently, with two already on the board. Two are, two are already on board, and three more are going through the hiring process. Law enforcement has had twenty one building permits, seven fund permits, five certificates, so offices, thirty two inspections, and three violations. And the planning and economic development reports that L D four twenty seven takes effect this week, which is one parking space for. Welling with growth, within the growth area. Plane board public carers is gonna be this Wednesday on a four path they're working on, or witnesses. Wayfinding study will kick off October first, um during downtown revitalization ad hoc committee meetings. And transfer station is going smoothly, there's nothing to report.
At the library on September seventeenth, there was an after visit from Mary O'Malley on her novel Love and Other Matters, and there were twenty people in attendance. The library advisory board has met for the first time in a while, as you know, it's gonna be two potential new members. Getting ready for October reading challenge, anyone can participate, and it goes by how many pages you read. The library director unfortunately has given his notice. He's gonna be leaving us and going to the library once. But he is gonna stay with us until October thirtieth, so we have some time to buy his replacement. Recreation, despite the difficulty with the soccer fields at the start of the season, have kicked off smoothly, and they're off to a great season. Erin has spent the last couple Thursdays at the community center, and that has been keeping her busy, I feel she's a great resource. The seniors, in honor of National Lobster Day, the seniors will be having lobster rules provided by chains of meat at the lunch and smart. October tenth, the seniors will be taking a turkey train ride to enjoy the full body. Assessing, Burnet is working on the municipal valuation report for submission to the state. The annual tree growth roster has been sent in to the state forester, and C I has completed the map changes, and G I S will be updated. And should go live any day. The town parks office has been busy, two hundred and nineteen motor vehicle transactions, fifteen vital broker transactions, twenty three notoriety acts. And absentee ballots are requests are upcoming for the November election are available in the parks office and online, the deadline will be October thirty. Uh my staff has been extremely busy processing tax payments, as well as the parks office. And we finalized all the documents for the audit last week, and Peter Hall was here this week, uh during the audit, and everything's done smoothly so far.
And under the admin department, um obviously department head meetings, officer Lejeune. Uh was selected as the employee of the third quarter and was awarded a certificate, and this picture got posted. Uh personal policy handbook is now on final draft, uh we had meetings with Betsy Olsen, who won to get the final draft, and that was some of the attorney. Got back and been processed, and now sent back to Betsy for final publication. Uh I attended the fire department's dinner and did a presentation for them, was something I did in my part of life as a fire chief. Um attended York County Town Managers' meeting, uh nothing interesting there, um. Attended the town and district meeting for the school, um Heidi.
Early Hershey.
What is it?
Early Hershey. Early Hershey, or Hershey?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's a hyphenated name.
Okay, well, she's acting superintendent, she seems to be doing well, um we had a good conversation, um. I had a lot of talking about um progress and what's going on with the school, um so it was a good meeting, um. Had a meeting with York and all of Daniel's contract, getting that. Changed so we can start doing our annual service on July first. Um we attended a luncheon meeting with Verwark Academy to meet the new head of the school, Scott Erickson. And the new chief financial officer, uh Linda Cassarella. Uh it was a good meeting, they were very, they're, he's from California, she's from Ohio, I think. And uh so they're both not from here, so very interesting to. Give them the background a little bit on the town, what we're up to, where we're going, what we're working with. Um and they definitely left us with a very positive impression, they wanna be part of the community, they wanna be involved in the town. Um and that they, they made it very well known that, you know, the history behind us, and the history that's behind us, and they wanna. We're gonna start meeting them, um and it, it's very, been very, it was a very positive meeting. Um we had another code book meeting with Paul Chumaka. Um we have two hundred and fifteen section parts, questions to answer to fill in, once you get that filled in, then we'll send it back to the company. To draft, final draft, and get that back to us. We are not, we are not making substantive changes to the codes themselves. We're only doing like political uh vocabulary, dates, things like that, updated laws, those things, he, she, they. Those terms, things like that. Uh council chair, instead of the town chairman, council chair, things like that. All the other substantive changes will come after the code has been completed and re-accepted by you, then it goes back to the patent heads. They'll work on their individual pieces of the payment. Uh EMS meeting update with Nick and Katie, working on that, uh. Pleased to say that we think we're getting close to the end of the contract negotiations for the renovation contract. Um we now understand that a little better, um we got some clarification today. And I think we're gonna be able to wrap that up, I will have us. We should, so we met with Oak Point and a very, very communicative Oak Point and Chad Brothers, discussed the contract. Um Oak Point has now completed their ninety five percent, has sent that to Chad Brothers. So Chad Brothers have now put the bids out in public for high actual bids. Um. So that being said, once they get that back, that'll be able to give us a high number to. Actually have the construction project, then there's the administrative costs, and then there's Oak Point's cost. Those three costs. Are gonna be very simply put into a contract called a G N P contract, guaranteed maximum price. That guaranteed maximum price is what we voted on as a tax grant. That's what we've been trying to get figured out, I don't know why. Our attorneys can't figure that out, but we, everybody else has figured it out, so we now know what we're gonna do. Um so we hope to have this, we're still on track, everything's good, um please raise an invitation today with those two groups. Um move that, moving that forward, so I anticipate, once we get the final numbers. Uh the path, because we don't wanna put in numbers we have to back and change, it'll come to you on probably the fourteenth of October. Surely thereafter, we should have a hundred percent completion, we'll put the final uh identity together. And get that signed, and then we're on our. Anything you wanna add?
Note, despite October tenth, they should have the maximum price to us, so it would be very.
So we're moving forward finally with some success on that, um. Still meeting with legal about consent, the consent agreement, um and as we said, meeting with the architects, contracts, both pricing. Um so last piece I have is information on the bylaws with the ad hoc committees. So it seems the information I was initially given by one attorney was probably not. As accurately correct as true. Ad hoc committees do not have a need bylaws, they should not have. There's supposed to be a committee that's very attractive, that you give, the only thing they have is a charge from the town council. That says, for instance, um we want you to take the downtown revitalization plan, which all the pieces to it, the checkmarks. Prioritize those, and bring those recommendation, recommendations back, that's it, that's all, that's all of that. So I called Matt Terra Savage and spent a little bit of time talking with him, he said, no, sorry for the. Long information, um ad hoc committees do not need and should not have bylaws. Because they could not make any, they have no statutory official making decision. So that's kind of the up. I'm sorry that I gave you bad information, but that was, came from legal that I. I took it, I did it before we started, so I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but I play one on T V, or should. Goodness, um but, and anyway, so that, that's corrected, so. I passed that message on to DeCalo and said, they need to just have the meetings, get everything done, and then they kick it back to you folks. But because they have no statutory authorities, they do not need bylaws. And that's my report, any questions?
Anyone have a question for?
Aye.
I just, a question on, I'm, I lost track of where we were with. The ad hoc committees, do they have a clear deadline? It seems like they've been off during their thing for a little bit. Maybe I'm wrong, because it took a while to fill them and stuff like that. Where are we at with that now? There you go.
I, I do not, that's DeCalo's, I will certainly have DeCalo um come on the fourteenth and give you a, an update. I do know they're meeting, I, at least downtown revitalization committee is, I know they're meeting, they're working on that list, DeCalo said it's. They cutting, getting pieces of it done, or setting stuff up, um. And that's, that's the last time, we had this discussion last week, DeCalo said they're meeting. And they got it, you know, they make it headway, and I said, okay, so they should have something back to you. Again, all they're gonna do is beg for our conditions, what you should prioritize first.
And follow up to that, do, does DeCarlo, I, I don't wanna speak for him, but does DeCarlo, and do you. Feel empowered to give the committees a kick in the pants if it's needed? Or does the council need to stand up and, and help empower you guys, or empower that group to stay on there?
So, correct, the, you're, you're exactly right, so I asked that question, how do we, how do we keep that on track? A point of staff liaison that gives direction from the council to that committee. So that staff liaison is DeCalo, so you can simply pass the message on to me to say to DeCalo. We want him to report back the progress of the downtown revitalization committee on October fourteenth, and I'll have him here standing on his head, giving you a full report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I may add, um just because there are two ad hoc committees that are um currently um in progress. The com- comprehensive plan committee are done, uh never gone, reached quorum.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to put that in there, so.
Yeah, I think like an update on the fourteenth will be appropriate, and it's a good time where we could say. Or, you know, if that committee has any questions, or additional verification from us, and anything, we can provide that too.
So one of the things that Matt was mentioning to me that we talked about, he said it's imperative to make an ad hoc committee, that you have a connection back to the town. It was staff liaison assigned back committee, and or a town council was assigned a committee, as I can get, when we started to review folks. With the connection back, and now we've got DeCalo, so it's just important when we do those things to make that. So that they stay on track and continue.
Any other questions, maybe? Alright, we can switch to council member comments. Anyone wanna go first?
Sure, uh sure, so we, I just really wanna put a thank you out and let the community know how lucky we are. Want to have the staff we have in the town hall. Um it is a pleasure doing business here, questions to answer. Um it's a lot easier than it used to be ever in the past. Um it's amazing what Nick's doing with fire department. Because I know a lot of people in surrounding communities that they have no luck, we have people knocking on the doors, signing up. Um it's amazing the turnaround there, Chief Rucker's doing an incredible job with the police department, um again. Um, again, with stops with the community involvement, they're doing great. And our public works guys saved us a ton of money on Andrew's bridge building. And the state ought to hire and give you two thirty-six, because I've knocked that every single day. And every bridge broke is beautiful compared to what they just did on two thirty-six. It's unbelievable, so hats off again to Jay the lawyer for all the work they did, getting it done early, getting it done right, it's impressive. Thank you, okay, um.
Thank you.
Um, we had, uh. A visitor that's never been to, uh, actually two, we had two visitors come by the house, um. They've never been to South Burke before, uh, and, um. We had a couple hour meeting with one of them and the other one, we went and found stuff to do around town, the first thing that she said. When she came back to me is, you guys need a light in town, I almost was hit twice. Uh, so I, I said people come back, well, they'll, they'll be there eventually, but, um. But she also followed up with saying, you know, you guys have a, a beautiful. A beautiful library, it was, and it was after the heat kind of broke a little bit, so she's like, I, I was able to actually sit outside and. And, uh, kind of enjoy the day and enjoy your town, and it's really, really beautiful once you play for Auburn. Uh, so I just wanted to pass that along, you know, it's, uh, I think we got a lot of good things. Going here and, you know, there's always things we can do, but we've been working on. Um, second, um, again, sort of like what John was saying, when we have the opportunity to. Work with and around the, the staff, it's, it's. I haven't had a bad experience yet, and it's not necessarily just because they know I'm a town counselor, it's there, it's, it's genuine. I had an opportunity to go over to the community center and I never, I never go over there. Um, and I was kind of surprised yet again, once I had the second to look and, and, and. Kind of look at what we have in this town, we really have quite a, quite a space over there, I never really realized what we have over there, you know. Um, so, just really grateful for what Mickey's doing over there and managing that and, and all of you guys and how you do that. And then a little piece of, um. The, um. L P C, um, what is the, what is the name of the group that gives us our training?
M N A.
Yes, M N A, so, uh, L P C, they have, um. Elected officials, so like town counselors and, um, code enforcement, town managers, things like that. Over the last four years, I've been asked to be on it for a couple of, of years and it's bought to. Elliot as well, I'm currently on it, um. And what they do is they look at all the laws that are the bills and stuff that are coming. And you kind of talk about it and how it'll impact blah, 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 but I just wanted to bring it up because. I won't be an elected official anymore, it will be kind of tossed in, so if you guys are interested or any of the future ones are interested, you can. At least ask about it, I think it will help either cause more problems for Tim, because you'll know more about what's going on, or, or be a help, but. I found it helpful, but there's a lot of stuff going on, it's not, I just wanted to put it out there before I forgot again, so. That's all, thank you.
Okay, uh, the only thing that I have is kind of piggybacking off of John, um, I should have mentioned this in our last meeting, but. On August twenty-first, I had our staff luncheon, um, so that we had a kind of a staff appreciation luncheon held at the community center. Um, that was just a really lovely event and for everyone who doesn't know, this is something that we're looking to do annually, to just take a moment to appreciate all of the people that work in town. And it was just, it was just a really lovely, um, couple of hours, um, like lots of awards given and food and, um, I know as a result, like. The dump was closed for a couple of hours, the clerk's office was closed for a couple of hours, and I know. There were some people that expressed frustration on Facebook about that, um, but I, I just really think that this is a really important thing that we continue to do in South Burke. To appreciate our amazing employees, uh, because I do think that we are incredibly, incredibly lucky. To have the staff that we do, um, who seems to care an awful lot about this community, and I know many of them don't even live here. Um, and I hope that, um, our potential new council, um, of which, you know, we are potentially, because there's gonna be three new phases here in a couple of weeks. Um, and I hope that that, um, the new town, new town council is abundantly aware of how, um, how amazing our staff is and that they should. Um, ho- hopefully can extend that same appreciation, so. I just wanted to kind of call out that thing, it's a little bit late news at this point, but I did send it, it's great, so, that's all I have this evening.
Madam Chair, yeah.
Yes, please go ahead.
So, I just speak to, uh, Dan, Ed Roman Woodson. The other day, and follow up of the letter, and he wanted me to pass on to you folks, he said, um. That both him and Leah were very, very impressed with the interview process. He said, if that's how the town of South Burke operates, he said, I can tell you from all the other interviews we've been at, it's probably the best interview we've had. It was very organized, um, very well structured. And he said, if that's the way the town of South Burke operates, he said, then you're probably operating a nine, high ninety percent. Out of the state, because he said, we've been to much bigger cities and the interviews were a lot sloppier, and he said, I just. The council was very professional, very, they were very impressed and said it was great interview. I just wanna pass it on to you.
Thank you. John.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Second, all those in favor say aye.